Well, good evening. We're really glad to gather with the youth tonight. And youth, I'm delighted that you're here. I just prayed for you a moment ago. And in my prayer, I said, Lord, I wish that I would have gotten to hear what the youth are about to hear when I was their age. And then I said, Lord, please help them value it the way they should value it. And then I prayed to him that by his spirit, he would do that. So I'm thankful that you've given up your Saturday evening for this. The Lord will bless that. And I'm always delighted to have opportunity to be around you. You encourage me and you build my faith. And I'm so thankful for each one of you. As we gather tonight, reminding you two books, that would be great to be on your shelf, even as a youth. The first one is A Theology of Matthew. This morning Polly Brinker came to me and had this in her hand and said, I'm so glad that I own this book. This is, all the things we're covering this weekend are in this book, and it's wonderful. So this is a great book to have. It's called A Theology of Matthew. And then the one that we're using for our study coming up over the next 40 weeks is Dr. Quarles' commentary on the Book of Matthew. And there is a QR code in the lobby. If you want to scan that code, it'll take you directly to where you can order this book and add it to your library. We're glad for those of you who are online to be here with us this evening. It's good that you could come and be a part of this, even though you're not physically present. We're welcoming you. And we're going to pray together, and then we're going to get started. Father, we are truly grateful for your word. I don't know that I value it like I should. And so I confess that, Lord. It is so precious and a life-giving gift to us. And so I pray that tonight, my treasuring of your word would increase. And I pray that you would do that among all of our young people who are here, and that they would value your word even more. And by doing it, know you more, and by that, love you more, as they see the love that you have for them in Christ Jesus. And I pray specifically to you, Jesus, as our mediator, that you would speak to the Father on behalf of all of these youth who've gathered, that you would stir by your Spirit in their heart of love for your word and a treasuring of this moment to hear the gospel and its glory in Christ Jesus. And I pray you would fill Dr. Quarles with your Spirit, to speak to us, fill us with your Spirit, that we may receive. And the result would be that we would worship Jesus, God in the flesh, Savior of the world, King of all creation. We thank you, Father, and we want to love you in response to how you have first loved us. So teach us that we might, in Jesus' name. Amen.
About that. Thank you. All right. Perfect. Thank you. Hello. It's very good to see you tonight. Thank you for coming. I think that the topic for tonight is something like, why dig deep in the Gospel of Matthew? And it's a very crucial question. And I think the answer is a very, very clear one. It answers the most important question you can possibly ask. I was talking to a young lady just a few weeks ago, who, believe it or not, sat where you used to sit, was actually a member of this very youth group. But about a decade after being a part of this youth group, she tragically renounced her faith in Jesus Christ. And in my discussion with this young lady, I asked, what in the world is going on? What has led to this? And her response was essentially, well, I keep asking questions that God can't explain. Like, why does he do things this way and not that way? And for some of those challenges, I could provide pretty good answers. But at the end of the day, I had to say, those questions are important, but they're not the most important question. The most important question is simply, who is Jesus? That matters more than anything else. And one of the things that the Gospel of Matthew does is cause that question to reverberate in our minds. Think of the disciples after they have seen the Lord Jesus walk on the water and still the storm. They say things like, who is this that even the winds and waves obey him? The key question is, who is Jesus, given the remarkable deeds that he performs? We see Christ himself posed the very same question to his own disciples in Matthew Chapter 16. He first of all asked them, who do people say that I am? They give him the standard responses, but then he turns and he says, who do you say that I am? And that's when Simon Peter replies, you are the Christ, the Son of the living God. That question that Jesus posed to the disciples that day is the most important question of all. Who do you say that Jesus is? And Matthew's Gospel is written to equip us to answer that question rightly. The Apostle Matthew lived with Christ and the other disciples, essentially night and day, for three and a half years. He knew the Lord Jesus very, very, very well. And he wrote this Gospel to testify to who Jesus is, why he came, and how he can save. Tonight, I want us to begin to answer that key question, who is Jesus, by looking at just one verse of the Gospel of Matthew. And that key verse is Matthew 1:1, which says, "An account of the genealogy of Jesus Christ, the Son of David, the Son of Abraham." I want you to try for just a moment to recall some of the titles of books that you may have read in a class at junior high or high school. And think about the purpose of those titles of some of the treasured works of literature, titles like The Adventures of Huckleberry Finn. Any of you read that? It's one of my favorites. How about Treasure Island, Charles Dickens, A Tale of Two Cities, The Adventures of Sherlock Holmes, The Strange Case of Doctor Jekyll and Mr. Hyde, 20,000 Leagues Under the Sea, The Man and the Iron Mask? Now, these titles of important works of literature all share something in common. Number one, they introduce to us something about why the book was written, what the book is about. We know, for example, from the title of Robert Louis Stevenson's book, that it's going to be a book about a treasure buried on some remote island somewhere. We know from the title of the book by Alexandre de Marsque, that it must be about a man who is sentenced to wear a mask made of iron for the rest of his life. You got tired of wearing the COVID masks. Imagine wearing an iron mask for the rest of your life. But the titles not only tell us something about the story that the book is going to tell, the titles also try to stir our curiosity and create an interest to read the book. Did you notice in the titles that I named, that several of the titles have the word adventure in it? The Adventures of Sherlock Holmes, The Adventures of Huckleberry Finn. When you read the word adventure, you think, well, there's got to be something pretty exciting in this book, right? Something pretty riveting, and it makes you want to read the book. Notice that one of the books is titled, The Strange Case of Doctor Jekyll and Mr. Hyde. And so that makes you wonder, well, what's the strange case? What is going on here? And what makes it so different from other cases? Well, believe it or not, the title of the Gospel of Matthew was written with that very same two purposes in mind. It's intended to summarize for us what this book of the Bible is all about, and it's written to stir our curiosity and interest in reading the book. Now, we completely missed that, because most people think that the title for the Gospel According to Matthew is the title Gospel According to Matthew, when originally it was not. That title According to Matthew was added later in the history of the church, when Matthew, Mark, Luke, and John began to circulate as a single collection, and there was a need to distinguish one Gospel from the other. The original title for this Gospel is what we read in Matthew 1:1, which is translated, "An account of the genealogy of Jesus Christ, the Son of David, the Son of Abraham." Now, how do we know that this is the original title? Well, the word that is translated as account in Matthew 1:1 is literally the word book, biblos. Our word Bible comes from it. And a biblos referred to a lengthy book that normally fulfilled an entire scroll or papyrus roll, ancient form of paper. Some people have assumed that Matthew 1:1 is just the introduction to the genealogy of the Lord Jesus that immediately follows, but it's not. It's the title of the entire book. And that word book, speaking of a lengthy writing, is one of our keys to understanding that. See, in the language of the New Testament, you could describe a book in two different ways. Biblos meant big book. If you wanted to refer to a little book, you used a special ending. It's called a diminutive ending. And we have those in English today. For example, the little ending let. What's the difference between a pig and a piglet? Anybody know? Exactly. A pig typically refers to a big adult pig, but a piglet refers to that little tiny baby pig. We can use that same suffix let to distinguish a book from a booklet. How's a booklet different from a book? Well, a book is that big, major writing, and a booklet is a thin, slender, little piece of writing that has many, many fewer words. And my point is, you can do the very same thing in the Greek language in which Matthew wrote this Gospel. And the key is to understand, he titled this, Matthew 1:1, "The Book, Not the Booklet." And that word book makes it clear that this is the title for the Gospel from beginning to end, from Matthew 1:1 to Matthew 28:20. And that title tells us what the book is about. It introduces the three major themes of this Gospel, and it's full of mystery and intrigue that makes us want to dig in and figure out what Matthew is saying in this important title. So what I want to do tonight is start with this title and see how it describes three major elements of Jesus' identity. And what we're going to do is start at the end of the title and work our way forward. Now, what's the last description in this title? The last description describes Jesus as the Son of Abraham. Right. What does Matthew mean by that? Well, in the Old Testament, God gave a special promise to Abraham and to his seed. It's called God's covenant with Abraham. And the covenant has all kinds of important elements that we don't have time to discuss. But one feature of that covenant appears in Genesis 22:18, where God said to Abraham, "All nations will be blessed by your seed," or "by your descendant." And when Matthew describes the Lord Jesus as the Son of Abraham, he's saying, Jesus is that promised seed. Jesus is that special descendant of Abraham, through whom all nations on earth will be blessed. Now, how are all nations on earth going to be blessed by Jesus, the Son of Abraham? They're going to receive the blessing of forgiveness of their sin? They're going to receive the blessing of the promise of eternal life with God? They're going to receive the blessing of inheriting the new heaven and the new earth and living in an eternal paradise, where everything sin has contaminated and corrupted has been fixed and restored to its original perfection? That's the kind of blessing that Jesus, the promised seed of Abraham, is going to bring. But here's the key. He doesn't just bring it to a nation like Israel. He brings it to all the nations, all of the peoples of the world. People who live everywhere, people who speak every language, and people who come from every culture. And we see that theme of the Gospel of Matthew carried through from beginning to end. Right after, we're told that Jesus is the special descendant of Abraham, we then read the genealogy of Jesus, that mentions only four mothers. And what do they have in common? They're all Gentiles. They're not descendants of Abraham, who belong to the nation of Israel. They're Gentiles who come from places like Rome, and Syria, and Canaan, and Babylonia. And the inclusion of these four representatives of various nations of the world confirm for us that Jesus is the one through whom all nations on earth will be blessed. Then the first people to worship the Lord Jesus in the Gospel of Matthew are yet again representatives of the Gentile world. They're called Magi from the east. They come either from Babylon, Persia, or Arabia, but outside of the land of Israel. And their summons to worship the infant Jesus confirms that Christ came to bless all the nations. We see Jesus commend the faith of a centurion, like a Roman general who grew up in Rome, Italy. We see Jesus confirm the faith and commend the faith of a woman from the land of Canaan, the old archenemies of the Israelites. And all of this climax is with the Great Commission in Matthew 28, where Jesus tells his disciples to go and make disciples of the nation of Israel. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I got mixed up. What did he say? Go and make disciples of all the nations. Why does Jesus give that missionary mandate to his disciples? It is because he is that promised descendant of Abraham, through whom all nations on earth will be blessed. And so what this final segment of the title indicates is that Jesus came to be the Savior of all the peoples of the world. He didn't just come to save people with white skin. He didn't just come to save people who speak English. He didn't just come to save people from Southern culture, who like cornbread and turnip greens and so forth. I bet. Anyway, Cajun food. He came to save people from every nation, tribe, and tongue. And the Apostle Paul tells us that that is an enormous display of God's grace. The Apostle Paul in Ephesians Chapter 2 describes how people, like most of us in this room, would have been, if you're not an Israelite, if you're not a descendant of Abraham. Paul describes what our standing before God would have been like without Jesus. And he says, "Remember, at one time you were Gentiles in the flesh, called uncircumcised by those who are called the circumcised. You were without the Messiah. You were excluded from the people of God. You were foreigners to God's promises. You were without hope and without God in the world. But because the promised descendant of Abraham came, in whom all nations on earth will be blessed," Paul writes this, but he says, "But now, through Christ Jesus, you who were far away have been brought near by the blood of the Messiah. He is our peace. He proclaimed the good news of peace to you who are far away, and peace to those who are near. So we are no longer foreigners and strangers, but we are fellow citizens of the kingdom with God's saints. We are members of God's family, built on the foundation of the apostles and the prophets, with Christ Jesus himself as the cornerstone." When I was a boy, growing up in church, one of the favorite songs that I used to sing in Sunday School and in Vacation Bible School was an old song that said, "Jesus loves the little children, all the children of the world. Red and yellow, black and white, they are precious in his sight. Jesus loves the little children of the world." Why do we sing that? We sing that because Jesus is the Son of Abraham, through whom all nations, all races, all language groups will be blessed. Jesus is the Savior of all the peoples of the world. But then, we need to look at that other title. Before Jesus is described as Son of Abraham, he's described as Son of David. And just as the title Son of Abraham meant that Jesus came to fulfill God's promises to Abraham and bring God's blessing to the nations. So also, the title Son of David means that Jesus is the fulfillment of an important promise that God made to David. And that promise is found in 2 Samuel 7. If you've got a copy of the scriptures, go ahead and turn there and look at 2 Samuel 7 with me. A prophet Nathan has appeared to King David, and he promises that David is going to have a descendant who will be raised up and who will establish his kingdom, who will build a house for God's name, and the throne of his kingdom will be established forever. And then look at verse 16 of 2 Samuel 7. "Your house and kingdom will endure before me forever, and your throne will be established forever." What God is promising David is that one of his descendants will reign over God's people eternally. He's not going to be one of those kings like every other human king, who appears on the scene for a brief time, has a reign for a few years, maybe a few decades, and then is placed in the grave, to be seldom thought of again. He is going to be a king who reigns over God's people forever and ever and ever. In the Old Testament, prophets described this king as the anointed one, the Messiah. And we read in Isaiah 7 that this Messiah is going to be conceived and given birth by a virgin. We are told in Isaiah 9 that this child who is born, this son who is given, will reign from David's throne forever and ever. And he will be the wonderful counselor, the mighty God, the everlasting Father, the prince of peace. Again and again, it is repeated, that this promised king is going to reign over God's people for all eternity. How do we respond to that description of Jesus as the Son of David? Well, we get the throne ready, essentially. We prepare the royal diadem. We get ready to present him the scepter, so that when he is king, we can demonstrate that we submit to his authority and we acknowledge his right to rule over our lives. The description of Jesus as Son of David means he is our king, he is our ruler, he is our master. And the purpose of our lives as his subjects is to live for him and to obey him. There's an old hymn written by a guy named Charles Wesley that says, "I'll hail the power of Jesus' name. Let angels prostrate fall. Bring forth the royal diadem and crown him Lord of all." And what Wesley was saying is, it is the responsibility of the people that God created to recognize the authority of Jesus as king, and to quit this business of trying to be in charge of our own lives, to get down from the throne and invite Jesus there, to remove the crown that we've tried to wear from our head and cast it at Jesus' feet, and acknowledge that he has the right to rule and reign over us. So the description of Jesus as Son of Abraham means that he came to be the Savior who brings forgiveness and transformation to all who will repent and believe. The description of Jesus as Son of David means that he is the king of God's people, who has the right to exercise authority over our lives. But what about that other phrase that is the very first phrase in the title? Well, we're going to miss the significance of that if we're not careful, because of the way this is translated in all modern English translations. Modern translations typically render this first phrase, the Book of the Genealogy of Jesus Christ. But the word that is translated as genealogy never means genealogy anywhere else in any ancient Greek writing. Never, anywhere else. Now, that's kind of fishy, isn't it? Furthermore, there are other words for genealogy in the language in which Matthew wrote this Gospel, words like genealogia. It kind of sounds like genealogy, doesn't it? And it should, because it means genealogy. But that's not the word Matthew uses here. His phrase is... I haven't changed a single PowerPoint, this whole... Sorry. Here are the beautiful images of the titles of the books that I started with. Here is the description of Jesus as the Savior of all the peoples of the world. And here is the description of Jesus as the King of God's people. Let's pick up here. The Greek phrase in Matthew 1:1 is biblos geneseos. And that second word, geneseos, is a form whose root is the Greek word, genesis. Now, does that sound familiar to you at all? What does it sound like? It sounds like the word Genesis. And it should, because that is what the word actually means. This phrase, biblos geneseos, Book of Genesis, is the phrase that was used in our most ancient manuscripts in Greek of the first book of Moses, the Book of Genesis. Genesis means origin. Why was the Book of Genesis called the Book of Genesis, the Book of Origin? Because it records for us the origin of... And it should because that is what the word actually means. This phrase, biblos geneseos, book of Genesis, is the phrase that was used in our most ancient manuscripts in Greek of the first book of Moses, the book of Genesis. Genesis means origin. Why was the book of Genesis called the book of Genesis, the book of origin? Because it records for us the origin of what? Well, the world. In the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth. It records for us the origin of the fish and the birds and the animals, light. And it records for us the origin of human beings, doesn't it? "God made Adam of the dust of the earth and breathed into his nostrils the breath of life, and man became a living soul. And then God creates Eve from Adam's side." And interestingly, this phrase, book of Genesis, is the exact phrase that actually is used twice within the book of Genesis, not just in its title, but inside the body of the book. It appears in Genesis 2:4 where Moses wrote the book of Genesis, that is, the origin of the heavens and the earth. And then he gives for us a brief account of the creation of the universe. Then that phrase appears again in Genesis 5:1 to describe the book of the origin of humanity. And Moses describes for us the creation of Adam and Eve and his many descendants. And here's the point. Matthew begins his gospel with the phrase that refers to a creation account. And then he adds for us that this creation, this origin, is one that is brought about by Jesus Christ. When he says "book of Genesis of Jesus Christ," he's not talking about Jesus as one who originated. He is describing Jesus as the originator. He's not describing as someone who is created in an act of creation. He is describing Jesus as the creator. In other words, Matthew begins his gospel a lot like John does. You remember how John begins his gospel? He says, "In the beginning was the Word; the Word was with God; the Word was God; the same was in the beginning with God." And then he adds, "All things were made by him. And without him nothing was made that has been made." And he describes Jesus as the Creator of life and as the Creator of light, both physically and spiritually. Well, Matthew begins his gospel in a very similar way. John's introduction takes us back to the beginning, that first phrase of the Old Testament, "In the beginning God created the heavens and the earth." And Matthew's gospel takes us back to the beginning as well with this phrase, "The book of Genesis." And when he tells us it's the book of Genesis of Jesus Christ, he's telling us exactly what John told us, exactly what Paul will tell us. Jesus is the one through whom the Father created everything that exists. And yet, he's saying more. He's not only telling us that Jesus is the Creator who made what we might refer to as old creation, the heavens and the earth, and Adam and Eve. He's telling us that Jesus is the Creator who will bring about the new creation. Let me give you just a couple of examples of the ways that Matthew will point to that. Do you remember what happens at Jesus' baptism? Some pretty strange and amazing things unfold. As Jesus is brought up out of the water of the Jordan River at his baptism, the Holy Spirit descends over those waters. And what form does the Spirit manifest himself in? The form of a dove. Now, why does that happen? Why does the Holy Spirit appear like a dove hovering over the waters of the Jordan River at Jesus' baptism? Well, the best and most ancient explanation of this is that it's a reference back to the work of the Holy Spirit in Genesis, Chapter 1. Now, remember in Genesis 1:2, after we've read, "In the beginning God created the heavens and the earth, and the earth was without form and void, and darkness was upon the face of the deep." What do we read next? "And the Spirit of God was hovering," the Hebrew text says, "over the surface of the waters." Well, that word that is translated as hover ordinarily was used to speak of a bird fluttering its wings in order to suspend itself in thin air. And since that particular verb was used to describe the activity of the Spirit in creation, when the Jews of Jesus' day referred to the Spirit's work in creation, they often described it portraying the Spirit as like a bird. And sometimes, they compared the Spirit to an eagle. But most of the time, they compared the Spirit to another species of bird. Do you want to guess which one it was? A dove. So here's my point. When the Holy Spirit descends and then hovers over the waters of the Jordan River at Jesus' baptism, it is a reenactment of what the Spirit did in Genesis 1:2 in the creation event. And that signifies that Jesus is the Creator who possesses the power of new creation. John has already told us that Jesus is going to perform the baptism of the Spirit, which means Jesus is going to impart the Holy Spirit to repentant sinners. And by the activity of the Spirit at Jesus' baptism, we now know what the Spirit's going to do when people are baptized with that Spirit. They're going to be recreated. They're going to experience an amazing transformation. There's a rich Old Testament background to this, but let me just give you one example. In Psalm 51, David had committed heinous sin, and he was grieved over what he had done. And he wanted to live differently. He wanted to change, but he knew that he was not capable of that on his own. So this is what he prays. He says, "Create in me a clean heart and renew a right spirit within me." He doesn't just say, "Fix my heart because it's kind of messed up." He says, "Create in me a clean heart." And the word he uses for create is the same word that's used in Genesis 1 to speak of God making everything out of nothing. And what David is essentially saying is, "Lord, if I'm going to have a good heart, you're going to have to make something out of nothing here because there is no good in me to work with. I need you to perform a miracle of creation that changes my heart and makes me the person that you want me to be." And when Matthew titles his gospel "The Book of Genesis, performed by Jesus Christ," he's telling us that Jesus is the Creator who will perform that miracle of new creation. Have you ever tried to make a major change in your life and to live differently from the way you've lived in the past? Doesn't usually go very well for us, does it? Now, we are not capable of changing ourselves. What we need is the miracle of new creation in which Christ changes us from the inside out to make us the person that God desires us to be. The Apostle Paul recognizes the importance of this. He is going to emphasize this miracle of new creation again and again and again. One of the most important examples of this is 2 Corinthians 5:21 where the Apostle Paul says, "If any person is in Christ, he is a..." Do you know it? "New creation. Old things have passed away; behold, the new has come." And what Paul is saying is that the Creator, Jesus Christ, performs a miracle of new creation, and he changes God's people to make them what God desires for them to be. He changes their thoughts, their attitudes, their desires, their priorities, their character, and through all that, he changes their words and their behavior. And Jesus is still performing that miracle of new creation today. And I have seen many profound examples of this. I have seen numerous people delivered from addictions to alcohol, to drugs, to sexual perversion, on and on and on, things that they were entrapped in, that they had tried to abandon on their own dozens and dozens of times, only to fail and end right back where they started, or sometimes even worse off. The key to their change was the miracle of new creation, which can only be performed by Jesus Christ. But do you remember I explained that that phrase, book of origin or book of Genesis, doesn't just appear in Genesis 2:4 to describe, in Genesis 5:1, to describe the creation of humanity? It also appears in Genesis 2:4 to describe the creation of the heavens and the earth, the entire cosmos, the universe, the world. And the Lord Jesus actually teaches us in the Gospel of Matthew that he is going to perform that miracle too. He performs the miracle of new creation in those who repent and believe in him here and now. But one day, he's going to come back, claim his throne and glory, and at that time, the resurrected Lord is going to perform the new creation of everything. And this world is going to be restored to its original perfection like Adam and Eve knew in the Garden of Eden before sin messed everything up in the first place. And we see a clear reference to that in Matthew 19:28. Take your Bibles and turn over there for just a minute. Now, I don't know what translation you're using. If you're using the Christian Standard Bible, the CSB, it will say something like, "Truly I tell you, in the renewal of all things, when the Son of Man sits on his glorious throne, you who have followed me will also sit on twelve thrones judging the twelve tribes of Israel." The word that is translated there as renewal of all things is very closely related to that phrase that Matthew begins his gospel with. Remember, it's book of Genesis in Matthew 1:1. And the phrase in Matthew 19:28 is paulin genesia. Do you hear in genesia something similar to genesis? The paulin genesia is a new genesis. It is a beginning again. It is a new creation, or as the CSB translates it, the renewal of all things. And what Christ is saying is, "I'm going to perform the miracle of new creation in the lives of those who repent of their sins and believe in me here and now. But one day, I'm going to broaden this miracle to include the entire heavens and earth, restoring the world to its original perfection." And that event is described for us vividly in Revelation 21 where the Apostle John tells us that the one who sits on the throne shouts, "Behold, I make all things new." And you know what happens in that instance? The Scripture says that God will wipe every tear from our eyes, and there'll be no more pain, no more crying, no more sorrow, no more death, because the former things, that is, everything that sin ruined and corrupted, will have passed away. The paulin genesia, the renewal of all things, is the new creation that is described for us in Revelation 21. And Jesus Christ is the one who brings it about. So what does this title tell us about the Lord Jesus? It tells us that he is Almighty God, the Creator, who will perform the miracle of new creation. It tells us that he is the king who has the right to control our lives and command how we live. And it tells us that Jesus is the Savior who will bring the blessing of forgiveness of sin and life transformation to all who repent and believe. Jesus is God. He is Savior, and he is king. He is the Savior who is worthy of our trust, the king who is worthy of our obedience, and the God who is worthy of our worship. Now, I think that that description of Jesus as God, Savior, and King will probably sound familiar to you. It really, really should. This is actually the way that the earliest Christian churches explained the gospel. Have any of you ever seen this symbol before? Raise your hand if you've seen this symbol. Most of you have, and you know that it's a symbol for Christianity, our faith. But do you know why? Some people think that the fish came to symbolize Christianity because four of the disciples, Peter and Andrew, James and John, were fishermen. Some people think that the fish came to represent Christianity because Jesus multiplied the loaves and the fish. No, that's not it at all. The word for fish in Greek was an acrostic used as an evangelistic tool, a tool for explaining the necessary truths that we must believe to be forgiven and changed by Christ. You know what an acrostic is? It's a word where each letter in the word is the first letter of another word, and you put it all together and it makes a sentence. An example would be madd, M-A-D-D. Does anybody know what that acrostic stands for? Exactly. Mothers against drunk driving. I think kleko might be an acrostic. Is it? Central Louisiana electrical? Okay, yeah. We have those everywhere. And the word for fish in Greek is an acrostic as well. It's written in Greek letters here, and each of these letters is the first letter of an important word describing the essential truths of the Christian gospel. For example, this word, this letter here, can you see that? Is the iota, and it is the first letter of the name Jesus, which means Jesus. Very good. The second letter is the ki, and it's the first letter of the word Christus. Our word, Christ, comes from it, and it means promised Messiah, the one God has anointed to rule as king. The next two letters are the letters theta upsilon, which are the first two letters in the phrase, the uhyas, which means God's Son. It means that Jesus is the virgin-born Emmanuel, God with us, the second person of the Trinity, who is equal to God the Father and God the Spirit. And then the last letter of the acrostic is the sigma, which is the first letter in the word soter, which means Savior. So when an early Christian was explaining the gospel to someone who had never heard it before, who wanted to know how they could be forgiven and have their life changed, they would write out the fish symbol, and then letter by letter, they would spell out this Greek word for fish, and they would explain that Jesus is the Christ, the King of God's people. He is God's Son, deity incarnate, God in human form, and Jesus is the Savior, the one who died on the cross, suffering the punishment for our sins in our place so that we could escape that punishment, and the one whose resurrection unleashed the power to forever change our lives. Now, if you've been listening carefully, you know the three essential descriptions of Jesus in that explanation. Who is Jesus? He is God. He is Savior, and he is king. When I have just a few minutes, say, sitting beside somebody on an airplane to ex- sitting beside somebody on an airplane to explain the gospel, and I don't have time to look at a dozen different Bible verses, I often do is just make the fish symbol and say, "Do you happen to know what that represents?" And a lot of people do know it's some kind of Christian symbol. Do you happen to know why? Almost no one does. And then it's an opportunity to explain the acrostic and present our faith in Jesus as God, Savior, and King. And this is a tool that you can use to explain the good news of salvation to your friends and to your classmates at school and to your family. And if you've never done it before, my prayer is that you tonight will trust Jesus as your God, your Savior, and your king, because that is our only hope, to have our sins forgiven and spend eternity with God. Let's pray. Dear Father, we thank you for the way you moved the apostle Matthew to explain the gospel so clearly and yet so powerfully. And we pray that his words will grip us, that we will remember them. And we pray that your Spirit will move sinners to believe in Jesus as God, Savior, and King, so that they can receive the free gift of forgiveness and eternal life with you. In Jesus' name, amen.
We missed Toby's clap, don't we? It's good to be together. Thank you, Dr. Quarles. That was wonderful. Thank you once again. We're going to log off on the live stream, and then I'm going to give you guys and gals the opportunity to ask Dr. Quarles some questions. So we're going to take just a couple of minutes for that. He doesn't know that that's coming. You didn't know it was coming. But I think it would be great to have that opportunity. So those of you who've joined us tonight, may the Lord bless you and keep you, and cause his face to shine upon you and give you peace through Jesus Christ. Join us tomorrow in the Sunday School Hour at 9:00 a.m., the worship time at 10:15, and tomorrow evening at 5:00 p.m. as Dr. Quarles continues leading us. Look forward to seeing you then. Thank you. Great. And Gabe, as you log off of that for us, give me a sign, a little note when we're off. Thank you so much.